Order the meeting of regular Board Supervising Meeting for March 2022. Everyone stand please for question. The board is deciding on the United States of America, and the Republic of Canada. One nation under God, indivisible, with one God. For the low call?
W Chief Phil Polaski, he's not in PD.
Kelly Goff, Township Engineer.
Jim Sullivan, Director of Engineering Services.
Chris, Director of Finance.
Jeff Widerbottom, Assistant Manager.
Bob Hart, Township Manager.
Sean Co. Kenny, Solicitor.
Ashley DePiero, Supervisor.
Kevin McDavid, Supervisor.
Tamilla Winder, Vice Chair.
Joe Givanas, Chairman.
I'd like to take a moment of silence at this point for the two state troopers who were killed in the line of duty on I-95. They were dedicated pre-people, local people. One was the chief in trap, I believe, and we're sad to see them go. But let's please have just a moment of silence. Thank you. I'd like to announce that the board met prior to this meeting in executive session to talk about matters of personnel litigation. All right, I'll undertake a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February as regular meeting.
I'll second that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Supervisor DePiero, seconded by Supervisor McDevitt. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizens to be heard. Mr. Chris, anyone online, anyone here that would like to make a comment? Okay, I'm going to start out on comments from the board, just to say since our last meeting, Police Chief Brandon Presqually has retired, and I'm going to thank him for his 21 years of dedicated service to the township and wish him well on his future endeavors. Any comments from the board on anything else? Or that? All right, hearing nothing, we'll start in with old business. Item A, bid award for the sale of a township vehicle. I'd like to call on our Finance Director, Mr. David Chris, to discuss this item.
Thank you, Chairman Givanas. You may recall last month's meeting, the board gave authorization to place on Minnesota Bid a 2011 Ford Explorer. The vehicle had been previously used as our, known as the fire marshal vehicle. It had only 64,000 miles in it, but it had a number of mechanical issues that were associated with it, and we were advised by mechanics that it would make more sense to sell the vehicle than to try to repair. So it was placed on Minnesota Bid, and over the course of the last two weeks or so, the bid was viewed at by approximately 1,700 times. We got 18 different bids for it, and it ended up that there was a high bid of $4,301 for the vehicle from a Met 4 of the Clifton-Cofax Auto Mall. And so what we're asking for the board to approve the sale of the 2011 Ford Explorer should leave the Minnesota Bid for $4,301 to the Clifton-Cofax Auto Mall.
Mr. Chairman, if I could also add, several years ago, you know, 10 years ago or so, we purchased, Township had purchased several Explorers, Ford Explorers. Unfortunately, apparently during that time, we had no luck with the Explorer Explorers. Apparently at that time, I know this will sound completely ridiculous, however, apparently they used some type of peanut oil lubricant on much of the electric and much of the undercarriage of the vehicles. Apparently squirrels love peanut lubricant. They eat all of our electric and everything they could eat through on a regular basis costing us thousands of dollars. And over time, really just, not only destroyed, but it just added to a plethora of other issues we were dealing with with those vehicles. But we've moved on from that. Apparently they don't use the same peanut oil. We're hoping they don't go back to that. So I just wanted to put that little tidbit out there because we really, we really had a war against the squirrels on our campus for a certain year or so.
Well, I appreciate that because I had a neighbor years back about that same time that had an Explorer in her driveway, and she had like a barricade around it at night because she didn't have a garage. They had turned the garage into an extra room. And I said, what is going on? The squirrels are eating the wiring.
It's the attack of the squirrels.
Yeah. So I can fully...
We survived.
Yes. Yes. Thank you for that. So, okay, thank you for that, Mr. Chris and Mr. Hart. Any comments from the board or questions on the sale of this vehicle? Okay, hearing none, then I'll make a motion to approve the sale of the vehicle through Minnesota Bid for $4,301.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Supervisor DePiero. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, on to new business. Item A, Asper Release Number 32208 Old Arch Road. I'd like to call on Director of Engineering Services, Jim Sullivan, to review this item.
Thank you, Vice Chair Winder. For consideration for the CG, you ask for release number three for 228 Old Arch Road. Based on recent inspection, it has been determined that all items in the project are completed to the satisfaction of the Township Engineers Office. Therefore, recommended Board Supervisors approve this release number three for 228 Old Arch Road in the amount of $31,184.97.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I will look back before a motion to approve the release of the Escrow for $31,184.97. Do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Seconded by Supervisor McDevitt. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Assessment of Hill 301 East Germantown Pike. I'd like to call on Township Solicitor, Mr. Sean Co. Kenny. Is it a new assignment?
Sure, thank you very much. As you know, most assessment appeals are handled by the school district's solicitor, the law firm of Rudolph Clark. The reason being the school district takes the lead on most assessment appeals is that they have the, by far the biggest percentage of the taxes that are owed on assessed value of properties in East Norton Township. So what happens is, is often there is an appeal taken, the school district and the taxpayer comes to some kind of settlement, and then that is often affirmed by the Board Supervisors. The proposed property, as I said, is a 301, the Germantown Pike. The taxpayers and, and the taxing parties have agreed a market value of $13,200,000 for the 2021 tax year and $13 million for the 2022 tax year. The taxpayer and the school district have also agreed that neither party shall file an assessment appeal for the next three years. This will cause that we will have to give, the township will have to have a refund of about $7,047 to taxpayer. If the Board Supervisors is not satisfied with this, they of course could have their own a razor, have my firm mitigate this, but in our evaluation of this, Joe Napoli from my firm looked at this, thought it was fair, and would recommend that the Board Supervisors already affirm what the school district has agreed to.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Co. Kenny. I'll make a motion to approve the assessment appeal as the solicitor has recommended.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Supervisor Chair, Vice Chair Winder, sorry.
It's okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next item on the agenda is authorization to advertise bid for the Heroes Park Improvement Project. I would like to call on our Director of Engineering Services, James Sullivan, to review this item.
Thank you, Supervisor McDevitt. Sometime last year it became apparent that the parking lot at Heroes Park needed some work, such as redecorating. We've got three folks from three of your contractors, local people, all three of which exceeded the public bid threshold, and therefore to do this project, we must go out to a public bid. We're asking for authorization to advertise a bid for the restoration of the parking lot and Heroes Park.
Any questions, comments from any of you? Okay, hearing none, I'll put that in the form of motion to authorize the bid for Heroes Park Improvement Project for the parking lot. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Supervisor DePiero. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, item D, Notice of Intent to Award 2921 Hannah Avenue Project. And we're going to hear from our Township Engineer, Kelly Goff.
Thank you, Supervisor Givanas. We had a bid open for the Hannah Road project on March 11th, and we received eight, sorry, yes, eight bids. The apparent low bidder was unable to meet some of the requirements under your responsible contract ordinance. So it's my recommendation that we issue a notice of intent to award to the apparent second low bidder, which is Scott Berlin Corporation. This will be in the amount of $254,940, and the improvements include the replacement of the head wall on the property of 2921 Hannah, Hannah Road. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
And Mr. Chairman, if I can add, this also gives us the street, which is undermining the street. So it's, it's a situation that has to be, has to be taken care of, and normally we would put it out a little bit and work for grants on this, but with the condition of this, it's something that's important. So as part of our capital budget, we will come back to you probably with a few adjustments, but this is important, especially time sensitive, so that's why it's important.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I guess I wanted to know, I'm not sure who can answer this, but isn't that area prone to flooding?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Yeah, that seems to always be a problem. I guess that's why.
And it has deteriorated the pipes and, yeah, so there's, it's definitely worked for the town, it's definitely needed.
There's always something negative. I mean, I was thinking the positive side, it's not a thorough streets, it was not a lot of traffic, but flooding is a problem. Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Goff and Mr. Hart. I will make a motion to approve the award of $254,940 for that project.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Supervisor McDevitt. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, item E, Notice of Intent to Award East Norton Township Park and Recreation Building. I'd like to call on our Township Manager, Bob Hart, to review this item.
Thank you, Vice Chair Winder. As you recall, in the past meetings we have discussed, we discussed adding maybe in addition to our parks, not going down to the park to give us a little more room for camp, for programs, our senior programs are kind of growing exponentially, and we need a little more room for a variety of programs and uses. We thought we would put some type of building down, or a smaller building, just to help out in this process, but as you, as you all see every day when you go to the pump or you go to the supermarket, prices are through the roof, especially in, especially with some of these building projects. We went out to bid, we had one bid to come back. It is significantly higher cost than, than we suspected. We have looked at other options for the time being, and we see no need to rush forward on this, especially when financially things may be different a year from now for this type of project. So tonight I'm asking you to decline or to throw out the bid, and we will deal with it in the coming months.
Okay, any comments or questions from the board?
So just to clarify, so it's something for like summer camps. This would be something we recall for next year or following?
It, it could be. I want to come back to you with a little, the prices came in so significantly higher, I want to come back to you, I want to do more due diligence and find out ways to cut that down. And, you know, I can tell you, I used an example in the past, we, it was a small steel fence, fencing we were going to put up, and we weighed that, got a price of $7,000. When we went back to it in the middle of Van Denner, it was $18,000. So there's no reason, you know, similar to that, let's not rush on this. We just think it's more prudent to wait and get our hands around the pricing a little more, and I think it'll pay off in the end.
Thank you.
And I'll just add to that, that I was looking forward to having a building like that, but it's nice to have, it's not a must have, and we have to be prudent in our financial dealings, because we have the money, doesn't even matter if we spend it.
We'll have it.
And we will have.
Timing, yeah.
Exactly. Okay. Do we need to vote to table this, or?
You vote to reject it. Reject it. Or reject it.
All right, so I will make the motion to reject the offer that we see for the parks and bike building.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Supervisor DePiero. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has been rejected.
I have a simple word for the municipal building widening project. I'd like to call on our Township Supervisor, our Township Manager, Mr. Bob Hart, please.
Thank you, Supervisor DePiero. This is a similar, similar action item to, to the previous one we just discussed. This was for our lights that are out in our parking lots around from the police department and out front. We have, we've been working on a plan to redo them and, you know, with decorative lights and rewire them too, really from, from start to finish, just put new, new, new everything. We went out to, we got initial prices, which we knew were over where we were going to have to bid it. When we went out to bid, we got three bids back. The price we were expecting, two of the bids were over double what we were expecting at that time. The third bid was about eight times what we were expecting at that time. So, and a lot of this has to do with, there's a lot of work going on and getting, getting the material. So fortunately, we have extremely talented Public Works Department, second to none of our county. We weighed doing this in-house, so after talking to the, our Director of Engineering Services and our Public Works Superintendent, we thought it prudent to reject the bid. Our Public Works will do a good portion of it themselves, and then we could hire the electrician given around certain lines just to finish it for a few thousand dollars and be done with it. It's going to take a little longer, but it makes so much more sense financially to do it that way, and we aren't in a major rush to get it done, so it makes the most sense. And we have to be, you know, there's the tax dollars, we're always trying to be as careful as we can, and this is the most careful decision to make of this, so that's what we're for.
Again, nice to have, but not a must have. Any comments from the heroes? Okay, I'll make a motion then to reject and disavow the bid for this project at this point. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Vice Chair Winder. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next item on the agenda, Resolution Number 2054, Signature Authorization for a Traffic Signal Application for Jefferson Crossing Boulevard and the Pike. I would like to call on Director of Engineering Services, Jim Sullivan, to review this item.
Thank you, Supervisor McDevitt. Because the Township owns and maintains all the traffic signals within the Township, anytime there's any kind of revision to traffic signal application, which may depend on for that reason, and this is for 2500 account bike, the apartment, proposed apartment building. They want to make modification of the signal at Jefferson Boulevard in their driveway. So to do that, they need us to sign the application for the traffic signal improvements, and we need signature authority. Does Pendot require us a resolution for that?
Any comments or questions?
And just as, and just here, this is sort of just a formality that's normally been done in-house administratively. Pendot wants a formal resolution, so that's why it's in front of you. Normally, these things happen, they're just done, so.
And is this tied into the widening project to?
Well, in effect, yes, because they're widening it, widening it there, but we would have to do the same work, do it in that area.
All right, well, thank you for that. All right, I will make a motion then to, the signature authority for traffic signal application at Jefferson Crossing and the Camp Pike. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Supervisor McDevitt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, item H, Authorization to Purchase a 2023 Freightliner 114 SD Truck. I'd like to call on our Township Manager, Bob Hart, to discuss this later.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you, tonight's authorization to purchase a 2023 Freightliner 114 SD truck, that's one of the big jobs. We do plowing within the Moncito roads, we do much of our large construction projects, any kind of digging up the streets, all of that, that stuff. This is to replace a 2001 International. We keep these a long time, so it's literally just replacing a 20-year-old truck. Why, why we're here tonight to do this, we need it, and it's at least a year out of getting it. So if we order it, we're talking next April probably that we, we're told we should receive it. So it's that far out having to, having to work on these things. So that's before you united, something that's just replacing something we already have that we use quite often, so hopefully we'll get it a little sooner than a year.
And then we paying a boat sticker for it? That seems really going great for a lot of new vehicles.
Well, we're, we're paying the coast guard's rate.
Okay, I got you. All right, I'm going to put in the form of motion to make a motion to authorize the purchase of this 2023 Freightliner 114 SD truck with the expectation that we will get it in a year or a decade.
I'll second that.
Vice Chair Winder, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, item I, Affirm Purchase of 2022 Toyota RAV4. I'd like to call on Township Manager, Bob Hart, to review this item.
Thank you, Supervisor Winder. This, actually, I meant next, are two vehicle purchases that we recently made. Typically, we would have come before you to have you authorize purchase. The problem is these, we tried to buy these last year, and because of supply chain issues, we weren't expecting them for several months more until we got a call that said, we got one in, there's 27 people behind you that want it, tell us if you want it, otherwise we're, it's got to go. This is a codes vehicle that we're going to reuse now currently. We have already purchased it, it's a hybrid, it's really fantastic, and especially today with our fuel prices, it's been a, a well-liked addition to our fleet. And tonight initially to affirm that, that purchase, because we, again, there was a, there was buy today, you're not going to get it, so that's what we did, and you, the board just has to affirm that purchase, but it was budgeted, just like the next.
Any comments, questions? Okay, then I will make a motion to affirm the purchase of the 2022 Toyota RAV4. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Vice Chair, Chairwoman, if you have a minute. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we have confirmed the purchase of the 2022 Ford Explorer. I'd like to call on Township Manager, Mr. Bob Hart, to review this item, please.
Thank you, Supervisor DePiero. Again, just like the RAV4, same situation, it actually replaces the truck we sold for $4,500 at the beginning of the meeting. It's a fire marshal vehicle and codes vehicle, so it is going to be, it's being used now. As soon as we got it in, went right into use, and tonight is just having to affirm it, affirm that purchase, it's made, votes.
Questions or comments? All right, I'll make a motion to affirm the purchase of the 2022 Ford Explorer. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Vice Chair Winder. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, item K, Resolution Number 2855, authorizing the submission of a MODCO 2040 grant. I would like to call on our Township Engineer, Kelly Goff.
Thank you, Supervisor McDevitt. Under this resolution, I'm recommending the authorization of the MODCO 2040 grant application. The Township would requesting funding for the Heroes Park Basin in the amount of $200,000 and using 20% match requirement.
You have any questions?
What was the match requirement?
20%.
20%.
And Mr. Chairman, this, as you know, I mean, earlier tonight, you've been in the parking lot at Heroes Park over the last few years, we've done tremendous upgrades there, you know, the ADA playground equipment, lots of changes and lots of work to the actual park, the trees, to those types of issues. So this is another effort to really, not only spread the park, but make it more functional from a storm work perspective. If you've noticed, we did have, we have a supervisor who happens to be ill this evening, but who I know, right outside of the park, we get, in terrible rains, we get flooding. We lost a car there several years ago, was in the car when the flooding came out, we take the rest of it down. So we're trying to do as many things as we can and looking at, at as many grain opportunities to deal with these issues that go on around the Township. They go around at every, they go, they're happening at every Township, and it's a constant struggle. Fortunately, we've been very fortunate to get grants that address a lot of these, and we're hopeful here that we can make some significant changes, not just to the back basin, but to the whole park in general, make it a much better area.
And I'd like to affirm that, that I've been to many rescues, water rescues in that spot, it seems at least once or twice a year, when we get a heavy rain, it floods, and people try to drive through it, even though they're not supposed to, you know, you have to send our guy, the fire company in to pull them out of the car or stuff. Definitely, definitely would be improved.
And we've already replaced our Public Works Department, replaced some of the pipes on the street, has approved it, put it in another lift, but it's, it's a multi-pronged project and made that whole area better, so.
Is that grant for all the parks or just specifically that park?
That's just for that particular one, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, I'll make a motion then to approve the authorization of the submission of the MODCO 2040 grant.
I'll second, I'll second that.
Seconded by Supervisor McDevitt. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Resolution Number 2856, Local Share Account Grant Application, Street Sweeper. We're talking about a lot of vehicles tonight, so we're having to gather from trucks to RVs to street sweeper. I'd like to call on our Township Engineer, Kelly Goff, to tell us more about those.
Thank you, Chairman Givanas. Under this resolution, I'm recommending the authorization of the local share account grant application. The funds that the Township would be requesting is in the amount of $268,492.89. The funds are being used for the purchase of a new street sweeper. A street sweeper will help keep the streets clean as well as the Commonwealth, or the waterways of Commonwealth, and there's no match requirement under this grant application. Do you have a street sweeper right here?
Yes, we do.
Is there something wrong?
It's old, and this would be a state-of-the-art street sweeper. The one we had makes a lot of dust, trying to clean up the streets, so it's, it's time to get it repaired.
I know a lot of people don't think of this, but it would be the same through their MS work permit, which we deal with every year. I don't want to give the state grief because I think it's a, it's a very useful idea for our environment, but it's an unfunded mandate that we have to really be careful and control what goes into our waterways. And part of that is keeping the streets clean because otherwise in storms that will go in, and it all adds up to where you're going to have to find and everything under the sun. So it does cost us quite a bit each year to try not only to adhere and to report, but to try to get better and to try to decrease these runoffs. So that's, this is all part of that. So to me, it makes all the sense that the state or someone, some granting body helped us out with the grant to help get us there, so.
So the existing one, we're still willing to keep and use? So the existing one, we're still willing to keep and use it occasionally?
Well, it, it's used, everybody sees it, you know, when we have to do one end, it'll be much different.
We could use it.
Yeah.
Okay. It's like a luxury, to have two street sweepers in the township. I'll make a motion then to approve the local share account grant for application for the street sweeper. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Please, Chair Wyner, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, it does break down quite a bit, that's why I said we all want it, and when it breaks down, I sent it out with a broom. There's been many complaints, so you should see that, not, not fast enough, so.
He does the best he can.
Item M, resolution number 2857, local share account grant application, East Norton Stony Creek watershed infrastructure. I'd like to call on our Township Engineer, Kelly Brock, to review this.
Supervisor Wyner, this is another local share account grant application. You can put in a limited amount of applications. Again, there's no match requirement, and under this application, stormwater infrastructure will be installed within the Stony Creek water, Stony Creek watershed. The grant request would be in the amount of $1 million, and specifically, the stormwater infrastructure would be in areas including Pacer Lane, Sardaro, Brier, and Hillcrest. The stormwater infrastructure would help to alleviate flooding risk and also replace deteriorated storm, existing stormwater infrastructure. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions? I think it's a good thing, I think the, the no match requirement, $8, we should go to that. I will make a motion to approve the local share account grant application for the Smart and Stony Creek watershed infrastructure. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Supervisor DePiero, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Monthly expenditures, I'd like to call on Mr. Chris to explain and put it down in the slides. I don't like just putting my numbers, I like a breakdown.
Thank you, Supervisor DePiero. So presented to you tonight are the township expenditures for the month. You know by now that we started this in the fourth quarter of last year, so that you can review and approve the expenditures every month. More specifically, the expenditures are from the last board meeting to the day before this board meeting. The total expenditures for that period of time are $1,073,536.45. The accounts payable expenditure portion, the payments for utilities, supplies, services, total $655,337.88. And separately are payroll expenditures, salaries, wages, taxes, et cetera, are $418,198.57. We're asking the township staff is asking for the board's approval of these expenditures. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Okay, here we go. I'll make a motion to approve the expenditures, so total of $1,073,536.45.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Supervisor DePiero, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Other business? Any other business? All right, moving on then, manager's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to let everyone know, and the board's well aware, and many of the residents, that the township staff, our codes, our public works, everyone's out there around the neighborhood. Spring is here, I know it's the beginning of it, but people are out there, you know, sprucing up their properties, their lawns, everything, and public works are out there picking up yardways, doing all the needs to be done to make, make and keep our township beautiful. There's a lot going on program-wise, we have a lot of events coming up. Easter, we're meeting here before you know it, the camp, summer camp, and everything that goes on each weekend throughout spring and summer, from concerts, we have a great concert series coming up, and you'll stay tuned for information on social media about that. It's a great, great time of, of hope, of spring, and hopefully coming out of the pandemic, we bring that excitement back to our community and, and we really come together as a community and enjoy so much that this township has to offer. So stay tuned for a lot of updates in the coming weeks and months, and we look forward to a great, great year.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
And, gentlemen, questions? Okay, citizens to be heard. Anyone here? Yes, more up? While we're waiting to see, any more in the car?
I'm coming.
I'll let you know first.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much. System of Locking, 2926, night red light. Okay. Let me say that here. Is there anybody who wanna read this? Okay. We're all over there, easy expert, the mic.
I'll drop the mic, Charlie.
Thank you very much, I don't think I don't need a mic anyway. 2926, North Whitehall Road. All right, if you're in the agenda, I want me to agenda, you have a, a white wall road sidewalk installation proposal. There was nothing said to it.
Yes, it wasn't fully ready to, to be, yeah.
Well, as we had talked, Mr. Hart, last meeting, there was things that were happening on Whitehall Road, my, a couple of my neighbors are here tonight, in fact, my one neighbor next door to me, she had talked to Mr. Sullivan, and myself, I had talked to the surveyors and Aqua and all that that were out there. This has gotta stop on my home. I mean, this is not the first time this has happened, we had it with the Wawa, we had it with the Lateral, we had it with the, the large apartment building you wanted to put across the street from all our houses, and then Einstein. We don't get, we don't get notices, we don't get notices.
Okay.
And, you know, this has gotta stop, really. Now, I have made it noted to all my neighbors what was going on, and even tonight, basically, and a lot of them do not want this.
Right.
Period. So we need to talk.
This, and we will, this, tonight, I knew you so long, but this was not about, this was a separate procedural thing, it wasn't about building anything.
Okay.
I did speak to our engineers after we spoke last meeting and explained that it has to be noticed, and that there has to be a discussion with the residents for this. Listen, I, I bought my house with sidewalks. A lot of people thought there has to be closets that have sidewalks, because they don't want people walking from their house. I'm well aware of that, the board's well aware of that, we dealt with it. It's something that we're gonna reach out and speak to, and get the feel of where you are, where you, what you're looking at, and what you're comfortable with.
The B and L office here, Mr. Hart, I've been addressing a lot with some of my neighbors, and a lot of it might be stormwater management, because some of the, the old things that go underneath your driveways are totally destroyed, crushed, rusty. You gotta come out and look before you go and do anything like this, because those houses have been around for a while, some of them. I mean, I have, I have the newest house on the street, it was built in '87, but a lot of the other houses, my neighbor had, she had her, I think, Catherine, what's your house? Couple of years before that?
Oh, in East Vine, East Vine, yeah.
We're on the way through side of the access road to the hospital, but there's other houses, one of my other neighbor hits here, he's one of the original residents here. So a lot of these, you know, things have been in the ground for a long, long time, and they have not been done, even Whitehall Road. Look, look at, look at the mess in the middle of the lines, where they put the lines. That's getting worse and worse and worse, I mean, but we need to talk. We definitely need to talk, and it's only from where Walgreens is up to Mary, that's all I wanna do. I talked to the surveyors, I talked to Aqua, I mean, they were out, my neighbors are all out talking to them.
I don't know anything about Aqua, so I don't know where that's.
No, Aqua, Aqua was Morgan on the sea.
Right.
And all the lateral, all the sewers, they were all, you know, the marks were along the street.
No, I understand, I'm, but, I mean, as far as the sidewalk thing, I don't know.
Well, I mean, basically, basically, Aqua was there for some reason, because they were marking it all up.
Right, right.
So, I mean, this, this, you know, over the years, we've had too many things go on with our little block there.
Right.
And, you know, we need, we need to speak, we need to talk.
We will talk, because I can, I promise you, this is a grant that's meant to improve your neighborhood and your home values, not to hurt it. So we will bring it out to you, we will have a meeting. If you choose not to, you choose not to, I mean, without force, stop, I promise you.
You need, you need to basically talk to everyone, so what they want, and I will say a proportion of them don't want it.
I strongly suspect that. I've been through this before, like, like I said, you'll have, you'll have three that don't, and three that, and I've been, I've been through it, five.
But the one, we have sidewalks on the other side, and the only reason they got there, when they go wawa, they didn't put the darn sidewalks in. So I said, okay, unless some people walk up in the middle of Whitehall Road and get killed, because that's what was gonna happen, all these elderly people will be walking up Whitehall Road. This happened back, a long time ago.
There have been more large grants given out to municipalities, not just here, I mean, others that I followed, where they had to give them back because the people didn't want it, right, truly.
Well, I think the surprise we're here, we're here tonight, and a couple of my neighbors are here tonight, basically to voice their opinion if they wanna come up and speak as well, but.
Well, we're gonna have a meeting with everyone, I promise you that, because you don't have, I mean, like I said, we'll, I might get a feel of what people want, and what they're, what they're willing to, some people.
Well, I mean, we had meetings before, when you, when you were at the sewers, I mean, you were at the sewer sale, and everything, we had meetings, you know, I understand that. But, you know, basically, unless someone says something, you don't know. But I'm just being polite.
I, I can promise you that the, when you weren't notified about the surveyors knowing what happened, I wasn't, my lovable self.
I know you weren't, I know you talked.
And I shared that with the responsible parties there, that will not happen again. So I, I stayed through, I promise you, we will be, we will set up a meeting and, and probably a couple different times, and not everybody can meet at the same time, I understand that, and, and we'll try to get to a consensus on this, and we are where we are.
Okay, well, this, you know, this has to be brought up to the public, that's all.
Sure.
Arnold, thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
And I just wanna add to that, too, that, you can, you know, I'm just gonna make a comment here, that I grew up on Whitehall Road above Maryland Avenue, I spent my first 23 and a half years there till I got married, and it was a dangerous road back then, it still is a dangerous road to walk on. In fact, when I was fairly young, one of our neighbors on the, before marrying, you know, down at the other end, down at the south end, was walking his dog on a Sunday morning, and we heard a thud, and he got hit and killed on Whitehall Road on a Sunday morning. So I'm very aware of the difficulties on the street, and I'm with you on this, if you don't want sidewalks, we shouldn't have them.
Well, yesterday morning, between 5:00 and 6:00 in the morning, actually, it's, that being achieved, I filled the passport, I'll get it out, PoliSCAP, excuse me. Already now, I've already placed it, I recorded this morning, the speed sign on Whitehall Road.
We know, it was locked down.
Yeah, at 5:00, between 5:00 and 6:00 in the morning, scared the crap out of me, I jumped out of bed, and I went to hell, I was, I looked out, nothing was there. But then when I went out later in my car, that's when I saw my neighbor's mailbox was on the ground, and when I came out, I saw that the speed sign was knocked down, and there was parts of, of an automobile truck or something on the ground, because it had to have somebody, be pretty high up on a side mirror, my neighbor. But I, I placed a report this morning.
Yeah, thank you, or.
Well, that's your property, you know, basically, but, you know, I understand, but, you know, I've had more than my, more than my share of accidents in my ditch.
And I'll second that.
Well, that's right across from Whitehall Avenue.
Yeah. It's a dangerous street, always has been, and sidewalks, I, even if there's sidewalks there, I wouldn't walk on.
Well, I don't mind if anybody walks across my lawn, I really don't care, and I got many, I got a lady that works at Einstein.
If you're gonna walk on that street, you have to, I had to go over papers on that street when you had to.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, you know, it's, it's a very, more, more traveled road now than it ever was, especially with the trucks that go to the quarry. They're really, because they don't wanna go on potch out, because potch out's a hell. So they go up Whitehall, and then get township, and go up, and they go down. So they're doing it in an easier, an easier way.
So your concerns will be addressed.
We may have to look into that, so I will talk with deputy too as well, and we'll see what other, what other measures we can.
I don't, see you right there.
You said, no, we're gonna be doing truck enforcement on March 24th, we have the state troopers coming, so we'll be doing truck enforcement at Gil Quarry.
And, and we'll check for Whitehall, we'll see, we'll talk, we'll talk about that.
Definitely, well, you have my mouth over there, I just feel like they had all their own stuff.
I appreciate it.
But I'm, I'm just, you know, we're just trying to be friendly, that's all. I don't wanna be nasty or anything, you know. Arnold, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Any comments from the board, anybody else?
My name is Rick Robb, I live in the 2930 North Whitehall Road. I'm the one with the mailbox I got hit. No big, I got away for four days, and I didn't know what they did in it. I took photos, definitely it was like a truck, because I got parked, and they're all my own, okay? One question, I don't know if you or the police here, what's the fastest speed limit you can drive in these storming, listening?
Different streets have different limits.
But what's the highest one?
I'm gonna say 45 miles an hour, but I have to double check to be 100% sure.
And where would you think that would be? Because I never see 45 in these special.
Honestly, I would need to research this.
How about 40 on Whitehall Road, where you wanna put sidewalks on?
Yeah.
Now, I got photos today from what happened, I guarantee those objects would have floated and hit somebody if they were walking on that sidewalk. I've had the telephone poles that used to on my property replaced now two, two times, and I called Pico today to come down and inspect that pole, because it's definitely a leaner. So I did call Pico, I didn't know who it is, I've been to township, so it's, I hope Pico, they're gonna come out and inspect it, you know. So I, just forethought, I noticed on the issue now, a 40 miles an hour, with those stoppages from Township Line Road to German Town Pike.
We will.
Okay? And you wanna put sidewalks here, and by the time you're off by us, we're literally going up, you're going 40, you've not more, I seen 60, you know, hey, dude, that's why you got knocked the sign down. You were going too fast, and you know they go more than 40, you're no doubt. Even this morning, the second, a school bus stopped, my neighbor next door picked up a child, flashlight was a white, like a white bus, her student or something. He's hopped in the morning, people are out, they waiting, you know, you can't pass, they run around a school bus. People just don't, they don't go slow anymore, they don't do anything. Now, with that, I guess the sore thing, they wonder, who, who owns that, or who runs that? The township has that, or is it off? The thing that might be on Whitehall Road about the storm sores.
If, if it's a storm sore, it's, if it's a sanitary sore, it's off, that's why, so I'm not.
I lived here since 93, and I got a storm rain in front of my house, never swayed it out once, almost 30 years, it's always full of leaks, always full of trash.
Okay.
So you're not even gonna taint in it, and it's terrible, it's 30 years.
Okay, I will check on that, I, I know our crews go around every, every storm.
I've definitely seen it played out, and I've lived there 30 years. Okay, so that might be an issue to start with.
I will overlook it, I'm not sure.
Thank you, but I would have to think safety would have to be a thing, I just put aside, it's a 40 mile an hour speed limit, the only one where it's not restricted, and your chance of, I go and see three, on my average, there's three people a day walk down my side or somewhere. There's a man who jobs every day, and I guess a husband and wife that walk in door. So I hate to see all this money built for a sidewalk for just three people. I don't blame people for, I agree with what you just said, I wouldn't wanna walk, I was scared that they'd fix my mailbox, and I was afraid, I was at there for an hour, I was afraid, thought somebody's gonna nail me there.
Understood.
And I'd say.
If I give you just a little feedback, and you'll see where I go. We have people actually come to the meetings demanding sidewalks throughout the township for safety reasons, and I know, and I know where you go.
But a 40 miles an hour, you're stopping, isn't that, I need to place the pole.
But what I'm saying is, I, that's where, so when we go out for, for grants and we get them, we have the, we have to look, so it's something we will discuss, if it doesn't make sense, the latter.
Safety is part of, I mean, it's gotta be a part of the safety issue.
There's no doubt, we don't wanna, we don't wanna put anybody in danger, we wanna make it safer, so if it isn't going to reassure, we're gonna do that, you know, so, but I appreciate you coming out and saying, I just wanted to give you, what we hear on the other end is, put those damn sidewalks in, you know, so it's, it's a challenge.
I understand it, like, I wouldn't wanna do it, and I have the feeling, you know, go south, it's gonna be street light, because now you have to light it up, and make sure it's good. I wonder, I was thinking about the Toyota, the RAV4, okay, what department, who's gonna get that?
Codes.
Codes. I'm gonna bring in America, baby. How many are you in America, made in? Is that vehicle made in USA?
I don't.
Toyota?
I think so.
I don't know.
Yeah, I didn't know.
It's an American made, because you're saying it's a chain issue, so it's telling me it's being shipped here, so.
Yeah, I, I don't, well, what we were told, I can, I can tell you this, when they called us, they said it's on the assembly line being built. So I assume it was here, but I can tell you, we couldn't get any vehicles.
I'm just getting where government even see American, the goldback better, or make America brave again, buying American products for American, for Americans that are money being spent.
I can promise you it's very important to us, we do.
That's why I got a little bit of the pickup, it was manufactured here, but not, but you already affirmed it said, I wasn't a foot at all.
To be honest with you, at this point, we were, we were practically walking in our code supply, so that's.
I guess it's not a form or a government type of thing, if we don't do American, thank you.
Sorry. Yes, Ben.
Deputy York at 3154 Sycamore Lane. Quick question, we know there's been delays with Amazon building, so it's brought up a lot of concerns in the Penn Square Village development. Has there been any discussion yet upon the traffic coming? We're concerned about the backup that our neighborhood backs up to Germantown Pike and Amazon trucks. We already have a large increase of vehicles that come through our neighborhood on a daily basis. Know that Washington Square Development has put up signs again saying that no access during certain times, however, it has increased again traffic through our neighborhood, which is a concern, especially where these are in middle school. We have frequent large vehicles coming through our neighborhood, whether it's construction vehicles or so forth, but now we're concerned about in the next nine to 12 months, a fleet of Amazon vehicles on a daily basis coming through. So, I mean, we're just looking to find out if there's been any discussion yet on the prevention of that occurring. I mean, we know that the sweeper has been widening, which is extremely helpful.
Right.
You know, but in the past, we've had issues with the school buses, with vehicles running school buses and my son.
We do have that.
You know, I brought your attention before, my son, you know, six years ago was almost hit due to a car that drove around the school bus. So I'm just concerned for the safety of the students, especially accessing middle school.
Absolutely, and I can't tell you what, but I will check into it and look away and be in touch with you on that because I don't know through the discussions if Penn Square Village was discussed, but we can check and if it hasn't been, we can address it now.
Yeah, just because, I mean, I think one of the concerns that because it's a rain shot out to, from Sweeper to Germantown Pike, that we, you know, we already have a large amount of people that don't stop at our stop signs, you know, everywhere in the whole township. So it's not, you know, is there any estimate on when they anticipate they have building?
So we hear different things. The last thing we heard from, I think our fire marshal was there and he said September.
Okay.
So, but I hesitate to say that because as soon as I say it, it'll open up next week. So I, you know, that's, but that's what it tells.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone on the line? Is the, Chris?
No, it's chairman.
All right, one more item and it's quick. I just want to bring up the, the coming months meetings and events and we'll start with Thursday, March 24th, this, this Thursday. We have a movie matinee, Queen bees from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. We have Monday, March 28th, the historical advisory commission meeting at 6:30. Monday, April 4th, Bingo Monday Madness at 10:30 in the morning. Tuesday, April 12th, senior, senior social hour from 10:00 to 11:30. Tuesday, April 12th, again, zoning hearing board meeting at night, 7:00 p.m. Friday, April 15th, the township office will close for Good Friday, but we will be having the Easter egg hunt here at the township building, behind the Parks and Rec building from 10:00 a.m. to noon, so bring out the kids. It's going to be, hopefully, a good day and fun with everybody. Monday, April 18th, starts monthly yard waste pickup and there's registration required for that.